I was just thinking, Mr. Chair, you have the floor, but I hit the video room. You have it, so I'll get it back.
Let me know when you're ready, Dave.
You're good, Mr. Chair.
Good to go. Okay, I'm gonna call the Red Lodge Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ray. Conley. Conley.
Here.
Eccles Bell.
Here.
Boise.
Here.
Whistler.
Here.
Dee Benedetto.
Here.
Bloomer.
Here.
That's everybody?
Yep.
Hey, I have approval for minutes from the last meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December ninth, May twenty twenty four?
I second. It was December eleventh.
What's?
It was December eleventh on that one, yeah.
It was December eleventh?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, oh, wait a minute, I was looking at the wrong document. Yes, December eleventh, excuse me. Any discussion, corrections?
I had a couple of questions on communications from the board. A, it says a goal of wanting to move towards a full city planner. Is that what we said, a full city? Or the word full didn't make sense to me. Does anybody remember a month ago?
I believe the discussion was a full time.
Okay. I knew that there was something missing there, so I would propose that we make it a full time city planner. And on the second page under seven, written correspondence, and this came from Westwood on A. We discussed the zoning of the casino bowling alley, and I don't recall discussing that zoning.
We didn't discuss it. We discussed the need to, as a comment, right? It wasn't an agenda item or anything like that.
So we didn't discuss the zoning. We discussed the need.
Right.
Discussed the need to look at the zoning.
Yes. It was a review of the P one zone.
Need to. Look at the zoning. Okay, those were my only two comments.
Okay. Anybody else have any corrections? Um, I guess do I amend the?
I would move to amend the motion to make those two small changes.
I moved, or entertain a motion to amend the approval of minutes to reflect those two changes in the minutes.
I so move.
Okay.
Second.
And move, and move.
Second.
Okay, um, roll call to approve the minutes?
Ray.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Eccles Bell.
You want me to?
Your call. You're allowed to, you're allowed to vote to approve the process, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, yes.
Boise.
Yes.
Whistler.
Yes.
Dee Benedetto.
Yes.
Bloomer.
Yes.
Back to you, Jeff.
Okay, oh, all right. Um, I'd like to welcome our new county representative, Marnie Eccles Bell. Okay, welcome to the planning board. And do you know everybody pretty much, or?
Yes.
All right. Um, moving on to communications from board and council. Urban renewal agency update. I'm just gonna basically report that the urban renewal agency is gonna be meeting on January thirteenth, five thirty, here in the council chambers. Two items on the agenda are under old business as to discuss and decide on criteria and rationale for regarding expansion of the urban renewal district to include additional parcels on Brewery Hill. And then discuss dates and options for the Kansas State University Technical Assistance Brownfields program to conduct, conduct a visioning exercise to guide future direction for the urban renewal area. Those are the two items on the upcoming agenda. Any questions about that?
What do you mean, my doubt, dates and options? In other words, is somebody gonna be there to represent what, what we wanna do for Brownfields? I'm kind of.
Well, this is just the beginning discussions in terms of, of them beginning to basically open up a session or opportunities to, for the community to develop a vision for the urban renewal area.
So just the Brownfields within the U R D?
Well, within the whole urban renewal. Yeah, the tech, it's the, I think, as I understand it, it's there's funding to provide technical assist, assistance through Kansas State University. And it would, as I understand, would include more than just what is technically defined as Brownfields. It basically allow us to look at and develop goals and objectives, visions for the urban renewal area itself.
So it's beyond what was planned. It's more like this is the vision and this is what we ideally want.
It basically, yeah, it would basically be kind of another plan to basically articulate more specifically what the goals and objectives are for the urban renewal area.
And what would be needed, for instance, to move the whole cement works type thing and rectify that area.
Yes.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Sandy?
Yeah, interesting. I keep hoping Brownfield's in the hospital. Brownfield's in the hospital.
Yeah, that's a different extension.
It's not part of the U R D, that's why I was wondering. As long as you're here, you wanna come over here and take a look at this. Okay.
Yeah, that would be nice.
It would.
Um, is city council?
We haven't actually met forever, so I don't, don't have anything to report. We will be meeting next Tuesday because city council's the second and fourth Tuesday, and we didn't have, that's why we're not, we didn't meet last night. That was the first Tuesday, so next time.
Okay, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, Marnie, but at this point, we usually ask for any updates from the county in terms of relat, relating to land use and other issues.
I checked Will, and he said nothing for tonight, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Um.
Look at you rocking it.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is a review. Jody is gonna provide an update or review of the S T R recommendations from the admin and finance committee, so I'll kinda turn it over to you, Jody.
Okay. Dave has the presentation. And actually, all this is, we presented this at our last city council meeting in December. It was the second Tuesday. It's a short-term rental review, so it's basically a snapshot picture of the, where short-term rentals are at in Red Lodge. And most of the, the numbers that we had are all from September when, when staff was able to get in all the new registrations and renewals, so that we kind of had more of an accurate figure. So, it was September tenth, twenty twenty four. And in our first slide, as you all know, ordinance nine sixty-three passed the Red Lodge City Council, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And it created a limit or threshold of no more than twenty percent of the total number of residences were allowed to be short-term rentals. So every year, we get that figure from, is it the fire? County Fire Department, where they tell us the total number of residential units in Red Lodge. Staff, this is a quick calculation, twenty percent of that are allowed to be short-term rentals. And within that, of course, we have three different categories currently. Type one is exempt from that limit, and that is owner occupied. You live there full-time and you're there when it's being rented out. So, you know, it's the true how Airbnb's and vacation rentals first started. You'd run out of room in your house and, and, you know, and then it's grown into this other whole entity. Type two are property managed short-term rentals, and they've allowed fifty-five percent of that limit as the number for the property managed. And then type three are all other short-term rentals, and they've allowed forty-five percent of that limit, and that's all in that ordinance nine sixty-three. Please stop me if you have any questions. And then we have our limit. There's been a lot of concern about where we're at with that limit. And this just shows, it compares twenty twenty-three when it was first enacted in September of twenty twenty-three. We had eighteen hundred and fifty-five residential units, and then at the September tenth, we had nineteen hundred and ten. For, so it has grown mainly because, you know, obviously, we've had a lot of new construction in our area. So last year, it allowed three hundred and seventy-one. We had a hundred and ninety-seven total. And so that was at ten point six percent was where we were at on that limit. Now, we allow three hundred and eighty-two, and we actually dropped one. We have a hundred and ninety-six now, so we're at ten point two percent. So as far as the twenty percent limit goes, we have lots of rooms. You know, we're not, we're not gonna hit that anytime soon, according to this anyway, so. And then it just tells you that of those hundred and ninety-seven, two of them are owner occupied. And sixty-one of them are property managed, which leaves growth of a hundred, which left a growth of a hundred and forty-three. And then type three, which are all other, there were a hundred and thirty-four active ones, and it left a growth of thirty-three available. So as the renewals that we had in September, we had, we still had two of the type one. We have seventy-nine of the type two, which are the property managed, so we still have a growth ability of a hundred and thirty-four are still available. And then it's kind of interesting that the all other has dropped to a hundred and fifteen, and so there's a remaining amount of fifty-four. And according to staff, some of those have converted over to property managed, and some have actually gone into, you know, just don't wanna do it anymore. They found it wasn't financially feasible, so. And that's our little graph. It shows twenty-three versus twenty-four. And then, of course, the top is what, in each one, is what's available, so. So the, this was just kind of a point of information. We had five type two that did not renew. And we had sixteen type three that did not renew. So there was a total of twenty-one that did not renew. And then per city staff, at least seven of those non-renewing short-term rentals did convert to long-term rentals. You know, some of them just wanted, knew that there was a housing shortage and wanted to help be part of that solution. And other ones just felt they wanted more of that steady income. They weren't making enough as a short-term rental. And so how many are new? In twenty-three, twenty-four, there were forty new ones, and then in twenty-four, twenty-five, there were fifteen.
Can I add a little footnote there?
Yes, you sure can.
Um, part of that new, correct me if I'm wrong, my memory, I've seen this, part of that new is attributed to the software program and, and a higher level of tracking.
No, not that.
That that wasn't into the forty?
Nope, 'cause that was like seventy-nine.
Okay.
So they were, these were true new ones that came on board that, you know, when we were having that big surge in housing sales and things like that, there were actually forty brand-new short-term rentals that came on board in twenty-three, twenty-four. And then we've had fifteen in the other, so.
Thank you.
Yep. I don't think we talked about that here. Here's our MuniRev, which is our tracking software for short-term rentals. And we brought that on in twenty twenty-two, and we really started using it in twenty twenty-two. We had a hundred and eleven short-term rentals registered in twenty twenty-two. And the short-term rental software brought eighty-six units on board, which we collected at, I believe, three years back resort tax. So that brought in seventy-four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars in resort, back resort tax that was owed from those short-term rentals that were not registered. So the software costs about thirteen thousand dollars a year, and, you know, that alone paid for itself over and over again. But what the software does with the tracking and the ability for city staff and the owners of the units and the property managers, it has a lot of different features in it that really are beneficial, so.
Mr. Chair, I see a raised hand.
Go ahead, Al.
Al, you're on mute also.
What is our annual expense for that S T R software?
Thirteen thousand a year.
All right. And is that the same as the resort tax software, or is that separate?
It's a, it's a two-part answer, so it's, it is not the resort tax software, but it does help feed into the resort tax. Staff is actually looking at a secondary package right now because there's a possibility it'll integrate into our other systems a little bit easier. And the current vendor got sold, and there is a concern that they're not keeping up with the technology. So there's a constant battle between the engineers go out and identify new stuff that's not reporting in. At the same time, those sites that do that for a living are constantly trying to mess things up, so the people can't do that. So it's a constant better mouse, better mousetrap, and staff is looking at the possibility of changing. The primary motivator being keeping up with the technology, but the second motivator being able to expend less staff hours exporting that information into our financial system for the city. Did that help out?
Yeah, I was just saying, was this software was the primary source of this information, Jody?
Yes. Yeah, the MuniRev software that we have is, actually goes out and it.
Screens great.
Yeah, screens, screens every platform.
And that cost is thirteen, and that cost is thirteen thousand a year right now?
Correct, yes. It does a lot more than just that, though, because it can actually go out and find out blackout dates so that we were able to go back three years and say, okay, these were all blacked out, you know, that's saying that it was rented. So we're calculating your resort tax amount as this amount, and they basically, I think, had to prove that they didn't owe it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So the other thing that we did, we raised business registration fees around the same time that we brought the software onboard. And a lot of that had to do with the amount of time, staff time, that was going into different businesses. And short-term rentals were one of the more time-consuming for our city staff. And since then, you know, we revamped it again, but short-term rentals went from fifty dollars up to two hundred and fifty dollars per unit. So of course, that, you know, even, you know, a hundred and eleven in twenty twenty-two, we collected five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for fifty, at fifty dollars. And obviously, that's not going to cover the expenses associated with the resort tax. So at the two hundred and fifty dollars, we went, twenty twenty-three, we collected forty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty. And then because we went, we dropped one, forty-nine thousand for twenty twenty-four. So basically, our staff spends a lot of time onboarding new, new one, new short-term rentals. They track the application process and the resort tax collection, but the application process includes their fire inspections and their health inspections, and of course, making sure that they're, they're collecting the taxes and things as needed, so. And we do, just to go back to that, we do every year when we're reviewing our business license fee registration, sorry, or business license registrations, admin and finance is very careful about making sure we're not overcharging businesses for that because those are there to cover staff time, not for the city to be making a profit off of businesses, so. Okay, hotline calls, that's another thing associated with the software. When we got the software, it creates the ability for citizens to call in complaints, you know, whether it's fireworks, trash, loud noises, over, you know, overcrowding. It's a twenty-four-hour hotline, and with that, you know, the call will go out to the short-term rental owner or property manager, letting them know that there's been a complaint. And then it also logs it so that we are able to, you know, find out. Obviously, if it's something major, it's also gonna call nine-one-one, you know, if I just call it, yes.
Is there a fee for the hotline?
I think it's included in the thirteen thousand that we're already paying, so. And as you can see, in twenty twenty-three, we had two calls, and they were two trash complaints. Twenty twenty-four, we had five calls total. Two of them, I did double-check with the name on this, 'cause Sandy had a question on if they were property managed or privately owned. In twenty twenty-four, there were two, five calls, two of them were fireworks, built to property-managed properties. It was the same day and the same property for that. And that was the only property managed one. And then the other one, the other, there were two occupancy number of guest complaints and then one noise complaint, so. And the ones in twenty twenty-three were all privately owned, so. The only property managed ones were the fireworks, so.
On, on the trash complaints, was that related to bear activity, or?
Probably. You know, the, the, somebody was complaining because the garbage can was tipped over and there was garbage all over the alley, type of thing. You know, it, it definitely happens. I'm surprised that there were only two trash complaints.
And none in the following year? None?
You know, I, I noticed they didn't seem to have as much trash out and about this last summer. I don't know if people are starting to finally, you know, take care of their garbage or what, but.
Yeah, Fish, Fish Wildlife and Parks actually had a presentation where, where bear conflicts with dealing with garbage were actually on the increase.
Yeah. And, but was that in town too, or just all over? Like, I know it's kind of our whole five-mile radius.
Yeah, I, I can't recall whether they made a distinction between in-town versus out-of-town, but.
We definitely still have an issue for sure.
I think people don't know where the garbage came from well enough to call in and say, I know it came from, you know, you just don't know.
And, and it's a short-term rental, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just don't think anybody understands enough to say, this is a short-term rental that caused this, so that's probably why. 'Cause I know there's a lot more that's happening.
Okay, this is our resort tax collected from short-term rentals by quarter. And of course, the way we do it, third quarter is July, August, and September, which are typically our busiest quarter, and you can tell that reflects that. And then fourth quarter, first quarter and second quarter. And obviously, our fourth, it looks like our fourth quarter is our slowest month as far as people actually staying in Red Lodge. And that kind of makes sense. October, November, December, you know, kind of the only time, big weekend there is Christmas roll weekend. So, you know, that's, and when we did this, we did not have the fourth quarter, we still don't have those fourth quarter numbers for twenty-four, twenty-five 'cause it's all due January twentieth, so we don't know how that's going to play out. Third quarter. Um, third quarter was down a little bit, over twenty three, twenty four, um, for the resort tax collected. And of course, twenty two, twenty three, that was our flood year, I believe, so it was quite a bit lower, so. Um, there you go. And then there's the, the graph that shows that. But as you can see, I mean, it, it is a big contributor to our resort tax. And then also um, T-Bed, as um, I don't know, most of you probably know, um, tourist business improvement district. It is a self imposed um, almost bed tax on um, our hotels and um, short term rentals. It includes property managed short term rentals. Um, this number here does not include our hotel and hotels. It's strictly property managed um, sites. Or if an individual owns, I believe it's more than three or more properties. So if you just have one or two properties, you're not going to be eligible to participate in T-Bed. Um, and they use that money for marketing, um, to market Red Lodge, um, their whole um, logo, and whether or not um, they want to market something or they also have grants for startup events and things like that. Is if that's going to help bring heads in beds. And um, you know, so people will spend the night in Red Lodge and help our lodging industry. Um, and then, um, when I was serving on the T-Bed board, um, there's a big push for educational pamphlets about how to um, be a good steward and be a good tourist. You know, leave no trace, um, you know, how to act on trails and um, they also have a map of the Berthes Highway and all the stops along the way, so it, they've really kind of branched out into the educating tourists. And I think our whole state, our tourism state and tourism board has really tried hard to, to kind of shift that focus from come, come, come and do what you want. It's like, no, come, but please, you know, be a good steward. You know, take, be nice to the locals, don't be, you know, be nice to mother nature, that type of thing. And you can see um, the T-Beds, um, fees that were collected by um, short term rentals were thirteen thousand in twenty twenty three and fifteen thousand in twenty twenty four. Now you'll see that's more because it's two dollars per night, per house, um, or unit. Um, and um, they say, um, when I've talked to the property managers, their number of days has, you know, gone up as far as the number of days that have stayed. But um, after COVID, people were charging a lot more. So the room rates, the nightly rates have actually gone down and stabilized again. So that kind of reflects that, um, the T, the amount on the resort tax collected was down. But our T-Bed amount was actually up because it's based, it's not based on the rate, it's based on the number of houses rented the night, so.
Probably impacted some of the decisions of people saying, yes, I'm gonna put, put my house out for vacation or go versus I'm not anymore.
They weren't making three hundred and fifty dollars a night anymore. That's back down, you know, to under two hundred dollars a night. So it, it makes a difference on whether or not it's possible for you to do that, so.
And that is your dashboard.
Okay, that's it. Any more questions? Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you because I know you, council has also um, u- updated the Good Neighbor policy and I know
Yeah, that was our, our first thing because we had not put that, we said we would have it and we did not actually create one. So with a lot of help from um, Chelsea and um, Chris Keys, um, it was, it was good. And Doug and I, we, we got that done, so people will have that up in their rooms, so.
And then on vice of, of city, of, of council, um, the Good Neighbor that we have is limited to just things that are tied to ordinances and, and regu- and, and, and resolutions. Um, so that is separate from what the, the, the property owners slash managers may put out there for their own rules and stuff. We aren't stepping into that realm at all. It's just, here's the ordinances we have. So we went there. And, and Mr. Cherry, do you see a raised hand?
Go ahead, Al.
Well, first I want to thank Jody and, and the Admin Finance Committee for this information. I think it kind of reinforces the parameters that we talked about over the last year or so and, and we seem to be well within the parameters. And um, I think one of the issues that you brought up in front of council is that we wanted to separate the administration issues of STRs out of zoning and, and keep just the zoning issues within our policies. And I think as we go through and review that in the coming months, we'll take that into account. And also I think that there are some members of the, of the current planning board that want to review the definitions a little bit, which we'll do as we go down the road here. But I just wanted to get this information in front of the planning board. I'd sent them the information that you had prepared, but I wanted to hear it directly from you, Jody, and I appreciate you taking the time to go through it. I, I think it's all pretty positive information.
Thank you. Yeah, I think so too.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Thanks, Jody.
Thanks.
Nothing from online.
Yeah, thanks, Jody. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Okay.
Thanks again, Jody. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Thanks for having me.
You didn't hear what I said?
What'd you say?
Does he go home and cry over the game tomorrow?
He does.
Okay, moving on the agenda, there's no new business. Um, we do have old business. Uh, looking in the audience, we don't have any public here. Is there anybody online that would like to comment on items on the agenda? And I don't see anybody from the public online, so.
We, we have two, but I do not see hands or mics, so.
There are two?
There are. We've got Angela Getzel and Angie Zawar.
Okay, yeah, I did. I didn't see him up there, so.
It's a very small print, sorry.
Okay. All right, um, so uh, seeing no comments from the public on the agenda items, gonna, we'll move on to old business. And under old business, Jeremy, you are gonna bring, give us an update on the draft uh, growth policy?
Yeah, thank you, planning board, uh, thank you, Chair, planning board members. Um, yeah, uh, we're working with Great West on final updates based on all the work, hard work that you guys put into it the last six months or so, um, in, with your comments. Um, we're waiting for a, a, a little bit of information and we're hoping to finalize that draft next week. Uh, we'll be ready for the next uh, planning board meeting for that uh, final draft review. Before we, before we start scheduling public, public hearings and all sorts of things.
And you're gonna get some information from Dave on the airport sometime in the next week or so?
That, we actually have
Is that right, Dave?
Lance, Lance is actually working on that language and so, so we are, so the answer is yes, we still need to get that through them, but it is on our agenda.
Okay, and, and we're still scheduled to get a draft uh, before our next meeting on the twenty second, uh, Jeremy?
Correct.
Was that, I, I didn't hear that. Is that, okay?
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks.
And then for my notes, is that the draft that at that time I'm gonna update for public availability on the website?
That, that's the plan. I wanted the, the planning board hopefully could go through it pretty quickly and uh, approve it to move on to, to council and, oh, we need to have a public input on that as well.
Yeah, once the planning works done, uh, and, and, and they say this draft is ready to go, then um, we'll, we'll want to put it out for public comment and have a public hearing with the planning board to gather any final public comment on the document. And then, then the, then the uh, planning board will make a recommendation to the council for adoption. And then the, the city council will then also hold a public hearing after that to gather any additional public comment and then they will make their final decision. So that's kind of the process at this point.
Yeah.
Do we only have one public hearing at the planning board of the growth policy? So only one opportunity for the public to speak?
We, uh, we have to have at least one. Um, we, it's up to you if you want to do more.
Well, my, my thought on that, Sandy, is that all of our meetings have been public. But we'll have an official, uh, publicized uh, meeting uh, that we can go through. And after that meeting, if we feel like we need a second one, we can make that decision then. But I'm hoping that this has been a pretty public process with the forums and everything. I'm hoping that just one published, publicized, public meeting forum, uh, a forum with the planning board and then we can go to council, but we'll see how that meeting goes.
Okay.
And if I may, I, I believe uh, council is also going to be a publicly noticed public hearing as well, Jeremy?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yes. I mean, this whole, this process has been very transparent and I, I just, I, I feel like we've given the public every opportunity to, to weigh in on this. But I understand that we need to have an official public hearing before we go to council. I understand that. But I think we could, should get away with just one.
How many, how many days will the public comment period be open, Jeremy? Is there a time?
I mean, there's no, there's no requirement. I, I like to, when I do these, I like to have, I like to have them out for thirty days for public comment. Um, so that's, that's just kind of been my uh, process, um, is to have that document out for thirty days for people to have time to review it, um, submit written public comments. We only have to advertise fifteen days ahead for the public hearing um, with the planning board. So um, I, I would recommend, once the, once the planning board has given the blessing on the document, that um, you know, maybe we work with the paper and, and have them put an article or, or some kind of a notice in the paper that says this document is out for, uh, you know, the planning board is prepared to draft uh, growth policy for the city of Red Lodge. We're looking for public input. You know, the city will be taking public comment um, on the document, you know, up until whatever date that, that public hearing will be for the planning board. And uh, and then wait for public comment essentially. But yeah, I, I like to do it for at least thirty days. That's, that's kind of my rule of thumb.
So if, so if we have uh, have the document on January twenty sec- twenty second, then we would look at thirty days after that to have the public uh, hearing?
If, if you guys say, yep, this looks good, we're ready to send this out to the public, right, on the twenty second. So we'd, we'd be looking at uh, what, um, your, your, uh, February meeting is the twentieth, so maybe we try to have a planning board public hearing on February twentieth?
But if you Twenty fifth? February eleventh?
Oh, sorry, yeah, yes, that, sorry. Sorry, I, yeah, I, I got my Yeah, so it'd be the twenty sixth, right? February twenty sixth would be the fourth Wednesday. Yeah, so that's what we'd be looking, sorry, yep. So I would, that's what we'd be looking at for uh, public hearing.
Hearing.
Potentially. That's if you guys say at the twenty second meeting, this looks good, we're ready to go, right?
And, and I think that for the twenty second meeting to, to go as smooth as I hope it will, we need to get it to the planning board members as soon as you can before that twenty second, so they'll have several days to go through it.
I think the only thing we're waiting for, I think, is that language on the airport. I think uh, Kevin uh, at Great West has gotten all the other comments responded to and, and, and included. Um, my, maybe Greg knows something different, but I think we're really just waiting on the airport stuff and then I think we're ready to, to send it out. So uh, hopefully early next week is, is the plan.
Yeah, I, I would like the planning board members to have it for at least five days before the twenty second so that everybody gets a chance to read through it and then hopefully that on the actual meeting on the twenty second will be pretty smooth. That's my, that's my hope, that's my hope anyway.
I suspect that the latest we'll probably get it out would be next Wednesday. So that, that'd give you guys a week before the, the next meeting.
Right. That's good. Does that work with you, Jeff? Is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Um, I had one, one question, I guess, uh, of all the maps that we went through or that were given to us, um, there was a map in there about that outlined the historic buildings and uh, high bug area and I had some recommended additions to that that I had submitted, but we never went over that historic map. Is that still gonna be part of the growth policy or did we just miss it, you know, when we went, went through the maps?
I don't know the answer to that question. Uh, I, I, I assume we got your comments. I guess I'll have to talk to Greg and we'll have to get with Kevin and see if all the maps have been updated per all the comments we got.
Okay, if, if not, I can, I've got a copy of what I think I sent to uh, sent to Greg and, and Kevin.
Why don't you resend that, Jeff, just to make sure?
Okay, I can do that. Any other questions related to growth policy for Jeremy? All right, uh, moving on, we'll move to uh, discussion and review of the edits to the downtown master plan that Jerry is gonna lead. And in terms of looking at time, um, I'd like to wrap this up by route seven. At least get through what we're gonna get through by seven fifteen, seven ten to allow time for the rest, written correspondence and other business. That sound good to everybody?
We'll talk fast.
Sound good to you, Al?
Sounds good to me. I'm two hours later than you guys and it's getting way past my bedtime already.
You, you, just, how much did you say? Did you leave enough for the priorities, did you say in there too?
What's that?
Did you leave enough time in that for the priority discussion?
Uh, I think so, given twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Will that be enough?
I think the prior discussion ought to go pretty smoothly because everybody's had a pretty good kick at the can and, and so I'm hopeful if you, we can start into that about seven ten, we should be good.
Is that enough to cover staff communications too?
Right.
Greg, do you want to pull up the downtown master plan?
And I believe everybody's got copies of the master plan with all the, that included all the people's comments.
Yep. So, so I would like to go through this like we did the growth policy, um, and really focus on the major comments. Um, there's a lot of obviously, you know, some, some added language and stuff like that. And unless you feel like we need to get into the weeds on any of that, um, I think just in order to kind of expedite this and try to get through this as far as we can tonight, um, let's maybe focus more on the, the, the bigger ticket items, if you will, um, and not so much the, the minor things. Um, uh, if that's okay. So as we go through this, um, I'm gonna kind of pick out the, the ma- you know, the major things. And then if there's anything that I missed that somebody wants to talk about, please speak up.
Can you enlarge that on your screen? Thank you.
Is that good for everybody?
Yep. So Greg, go ahead and scroll down. Um, I think we, we, we've got the comments on the, on the title page and stuff. I don't, I didn't see any major there. Can you, yeah, let's show the actual comments. So the, these ones are, were pretty straightforward as well. You know, just calling out the, the actual, uh, the full name of the Planning and Zoning Commission and then, um, you know, the, this stuff. So I, I don't see any issues with any of that. So let's go to the first page. Okay, so this is, oh, we can work with uh, Great West on photos. I know uh, Kevin is also working on photos for the growth policy, um, and he's, he's working on that. So I, hopefully what we can do is kind of use some of the, any photos that he, recent photos that he maybe generates from the growth policy. Um, we can replace some of these older photos in this as well. Um, so we'll work with Kevin and Great West on that.
Yeah, these photos are like ten years old and Murk Coleman, a local photographer, has a lot of photos as well.
Yep, so my understanding is uh, Kevin was gonna reach out to him and, and on growth, uh, and ask, you know, uh, uh, ask for some photos or, or work Uh, and ask, you know, uh, uh, ask for some photos or, or work with him in some manner to see if he could get some photos, um.
If he can't do it, Dan Wells or Randy Dragon would take photos for us. Um, yeah, gratis.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I will reach out to Kevin again this week and just see where he's gotten those photos. Um, I haven't had an update on, from him on that. For, for a little while, so, um, we'll, Greg, Greg or I'll get with him, um, tomorrow and see where he's out with the photos, uh. Discussion, so. Um, Greg, was there a comment of above Jeff's comment here? Oh, just the, just a picture, okay, um. Jeff, did you want to expand on this? I, I think this is a pretty straightforward comment. I didn't see any issues with it.
Yeah, I, I see that, uh, word historic was added.
Okay, so go ahead and keep going, Greg.
So I can zoom in a little bit for the people in person.
So, yeah, keep, go, go down to the second page here, the top of the second page. So the source comment, is that on, what was that on, Greg? That's the twenty-five-hundred residents and thousands of.
Yeah.
So we're just looking for a source for that. That, that number, is that what we're getting at there?
If you were reading this, you'd, how many thousands, I mean, how big is Red Lodge? How, you know, if you weren't living here, you wouldn't know. So is there another more accurate figure than just thousands?
The Chamber might have that number.
Yeah, that's what I thought they'd have.
Okay, so a little bit, a little bit more description on, um. You know, where we're getting our population and, and then as far as visitors. Um, a little dialogue in a little bit better than just thousands of visitors each year.
Help size what Red Lodge is really like, especially for tourists or. People that might want to come out here and open a business. Thousands doesn't say much.
Sure, okay. And, and just, uh, so everybody knows Jim is also on the, on, on Zoom, so if there's any. Questions that, that he can specifically answer, he, he might be able to jump in as well and. Um, since he helped, uh, draft this document, so.
I can speak a little bit to that question, Jeremy. Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I reached out to Sherry with the Chamber of Commerce on two separate occasions because I had that same question. How many visitors does Red Lodge get? And I was not able to get a good answer, unfortunately. Um, so I ended up going with thousands of visitors each year. You know, there's some kind of ballpark figures out there as to part, you know, attendance from Yellowstone National Park. But I was not able to find a good number as to what the current numbers, visitation numbers are for Red Lodge. But I'll keep looking.
When, when we did a pool study, uh, Jim, uh, we got some visitor numbers from, uh, a study that was done at the University of Montana. Um, and it was like sixty thousand a month, uh, during the summer and I forget what it was during the winter. Um, you might check with the, uh. University of Montana have done some tourism studies.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, go, uh, go ahead.
I, I know that the Chamber has purchased some, um. Some software where they can track exact by telephone, so it's not like TID. But it can track, it can pinpoint and track how many visitors. And where they come from, how long they're here, where they visit, so you might double check with Sherry again.
That, that's just, just in, just like within the last thirty days, we've done that, so it's something that. In future years, we'll have better information and better data, but it's not available yet.
Okay.
Greg, can you, uh, can you hit the red dashes over here so we can actually see the, the red lines in the document too?
I see it hit me on the shoulder.
Oh, because it kicks the comments over, doesn't it?
Yeah, uh, Dave said that, sent me a message that said, uh. It's tough to see with all the white space in between the two when they're both.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, you can put it back then. Yeah, there, okay, so Jeff had a comment that, uh, just to add byway to the, uh. Um, uh, bare-toothed. Um, highway, basically. Bare-tooth scenic highway instead of, um, just bare-tooth highway. So that's, that's not, that's, that's small.
That's the official, that's the official title of it, that's.
Sure.
Um. And if, and if you just, you, if you don't want to go that long, then scenic might be just as, address it as well, but it's. The official name is, the na- it, or it. Destination is a national scenic byways, all-American road.
Uh, I mean, we got the comment, I guess we'll, we'll, we can talk to Great West, uh, Jim and those guys about how, if they want to do that whole thing or not. Okay, uh.
Do we get this one, Jeremy? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that just goes along with the other source one, um. So Jeff, you had this comment too, um, you just say, uh, are you at, at, saying we should add some additional information? Well, we have Yellowstone Park in there.
Yeah, I think, I think it's got added. It says adjacent national forests and other public lands. I think that was my intent.
Okay, that, that answers your comment then?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, you can keep going, Greg. Because I don't know what that.
I just. Formatting thing.
Just a format, okay. Um, and then, uh, the comment was. Uh, should skiing be called out as a year-round recreation, year-round destination for skiing, golfing? Jim, did you want to address that comment and, and, and how that's worded? Think the concern is that it says year-round destination for skiing.
Ah.
But those, those, I, those things aren't really, like golfing isn't year-round either.
Yeah, I don't know how to, uh. I guess you can say just as a, as a des- drop the, well, I think the year-round destination is the important part. And those would, and those are the activities that can be done throughout the year. So maybe I can clean that up, but I would hate to drop the idea of year-round destination because I think that's a very strong selling point for Red Lodge.
Sure. Well, may- maybe we can just work on the wording a little bit after year-round destination. And maybe we can say, like, such as skiing in the wintertime, golfing in the summertime, you know, those types of things. And then it looks like the, they have some comments on like, may- maybe hiking, biking, some other activities as well. Just kind of expand on that list.
Sure.
A little bit.
Something like a year-round destination for tourism, sporting activities and social events?
That, and you could say, and then you could say that, that include, you know, seasonal activities such as skiing, golfing. Hiking, biking, fishing, hunting, right?
Right.
Something along those lines.
I think I picked up on those three points because those were three points that I kept consistently seeing mentioned in a lot of your publications. That skiing was a big part, piece of the tourism during the winter, obviously. Golfing was a new, a new component and the wedding venues seemed to be something that was really being stressed in your. In a fair amount of your promotional documentation.
Well, I'm not so sure about golfing is certainly there, but certainly hiking and fishing and camping and all those things, I think. Are ahead of golfing, for sure.
Okay.
Well, we'll just expand on that list and, and we'll work on that wording after year-round destination a little bit, so we can do that.
I had a comment about that, that, you know, that maybe kind of captures that, but what's kind of missing out on all that is again. You know, referencing just increasing recreational use on adjacent public lands. Um, some of that is captured to it when you list skiing and fishing and hiking, but I think. I think what gets kind of missed in all that is the fact that. People are coming here to Red Lodge to recreate. As much on the national forest as well as to participate in activities within town, so.
Yeah.
Right.
My suggestion was, was to. To. Yeah, and that, that's in my comment, uh, there, JD fifteen.
I like that recreational use on public, uh, public lands, Jeff, because that really, that covers everything.
I mean, people are coming here for, in the winter for cross-country skiing at the Nordic Center. The activities on the West Fork Road, I mean, that, those are. It's not just coming to, to, to Red Lodge itself, it's, what's drawing them here is, is the proximity to. Those activities on adjacent public lands.
I think we understand your comments, uh, so we'll, we'll work with, uh, with Jim on, on addressing that and, and rewording that, so.
Uh, we're just trying to be general rather than specific because you're going to leave something out in terms of. Whether it's the motorcycle rally or the rodeo or whatever, I mean, that's why they come, so.
Right. Okay, noted.
Anybody have comments on that?
I just think that we should promote the fact that we have how many acres of Custer National Forest right there. I mean, you know, hundreds of thousands of acres. I don't know how many acres are in it, but that's a big draw for Red Lodge.
We do get some, we do get some input from hockey as well.
What's that?
Yeah, let's not forget ice skating, huh?
Yeah, right. Like I say, try, try to be less specific and more general.
I, I don't know if we need to get that specific, but if you want to know what the acres are, it's about five hundred thousand acres.
Of public land.
Well, that's national forest. It doesn't include Bureau of Land Management that's.
Also there, yeah, and I think that that is a big draw to Red Lodge. Is it, what, takes about eight minutes to get to it?
Yeah.
Okay, I think. I think we got the message there.
All right, yeah, we got it. So the next comment is, uh, looks like, uh, uh, it's on the, in desk industries. Um, so adding a, rather than just saying light industrial. Um, changing that to artisan industries, and I think there was actually a couple of comments on this. Uh, one from Jeff and one from somebody else, I believe, uh, from recall, um. Yep, so, yeah, considering light industrial and the heart of the CBD, so yeah, I mean, I think that's, those are valid comments. I do like, I do like Jeff's, personally, I like Jeff's comment on maybe saying artisan industries instead of light industrial. Um, I think that captures what he's saying a little bit better. Um, where we, we still want some of that type of stuff, but. We don't want like a chemical plant downtown or something, right? Um, but we want those, you know, craftsmen, um, artists, you know, those sorts of things downtown.
And I, and I provided a definition of what artisan industries are, if people are interested.
So.
And that's what includes Sam's. Distillery and, uh.
Breweries and that sort of stuff, yep. So, okay, I think we understand that, uh. That comments. Any other comments on that?
Don't, don't see any.
Hearing none, we'll move on.
I keep forgetting that John Gray's on, so.
Nope.
Raise your hand and just speak, or speak up, John, if you see anything.
No worries, thanks, Jeff.
Um, okay, so, um, what's that one on? Greg, unnecessary.
Industries.
Oh, that, that was a light industrial thing too, okay. All right, we got that, I think, covered. Uh, all right, so the next one is community housing is less, so rather than saying affordable housing, is that what we're getting at? Say community housing?
Yeah, that was a terminology that we talked about in terms of. The confused, you know, we interchange workforce and affordable housing and I thought. One of the things we came out of the forum was more to provide community housing or, or some, something like that.
And I personally, I personally hate to say that, that the housing problem is because of short-term rentals. We've had short-term rentals in Red Lodge for thirty years, so it's not new. And it, it. So I, I just hate saying that that's the whole problem. It isn't the whole problem.
So the, so the end part is what you're talking about then, um, just.
Yeah.
Graph, um. Maybe ta- taking short-term rentals out of that, is that what you're saying?
Well. We have is really the, the price of homes.
Right.
Doesn't, you know, you can't, if you spend four hundred thousand on a house, you can't rent it for four thousand dollars a month. So whether it's in the short-term rental market or long-term, it's the price of the homes has gone up.
So that last, that last sentence, essentially what you're saying is.
I would leave it as rapid increase in real estate prices.
But leave out the, the last part, the second.
Yeah, it's not blame short-term rentals for everything.
Right.
Always been here.
Any other thoughts on that from the rest of the board?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I was going to say that sense kind of does talk to the fact that it's a multifaceted. Issue that, that, that's related to, it's not just focusing on short-term rentals. It's the combination of increased real estate prices. The popularity of second homes is what I was suggesting to add. And, and short-term rentals, so I, I think it's. It's not just an increase in real estate prices, it's kind of what are the, what are the other things that are sort of.
Right.
Contributing to the shortage of available housing.
And I think you're right, the second homes, we have quite a few second homes.
I think the way it reads is a lot more accurate, that it, it, it gives you the idea that, yeah, there's all these things going on. It's not just short-term rentals. I think it sounds good.
I, I would put a period after second homes in scratch and short-term rentals.
I'm with you, Al, but that's just me. Short-term.
Well, I, I just think the latest report showed us that. The impact of short-term rentals is not what we feared it to be, um, and, and. As I said, it's multifaceted in that housing costs have increased disproportionately to income and. So it gets, it's, it's complicated. I don't think we ought to just pick on short-term rentals.
Well, second homes actually are used as short-term rentals in some cases, so it would be all right as well, just to add. End it with short, you know, with second homes.
So I'll get a, see if we got consensus here on the table, Teresa, so dropping short-term rental?
Yeah, I think people can draw their own conclusions and just stop at second homes.
I like adding second homes and dropping short-term rentals.
Morning.
I agree.
A period after second homes and the drop to rest.
And John, John, what, your thoughts on that?
Like you said, it's multifaceted, it's a, you know, we're a small-town tourist. Community, I mean, if this isn't the only town that's having the issue. So, you know, back with the other company, with the other cities you've worked with in the past. What are, you know, what's the language you use with inside a, you know, community that's, you know, such as ours, right? Um, we're not the only one that's a ski town or a tourist town on the thunder.
I probably defer to Jim on that question. He, he's more familiar with downtown master plans.
Um, yeah, I, I think the, the use of the word second homes would be good, um, and yes, sub, short-term rentals. Is kind, kind of a hot-button topic these days, especially in tourism communities, um, but we can. And I did hear a little bit of that presentation before and, and I think you're right, I, I don't think the short-term rental. Issue is going to be quite as big of a problem as people think it will be. And I think the market will take care of itself to some extent, so, yeah, the use of the word just second, second homes, um, period. Makes sense to me.
I think that sounds good too.
Yep.
I think we're all in agreement with that, Jeremy.
So a period after second homes and drop the rest.
Got it.
Here we go, skip this one, Jeremy.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't see any issues with adding healthcare workers. Okay, yeah, I I don't see any issues with adding healthcare workers there. So I think that's fine. Um, yeah, what's that comment? Jeff, did you wanna? Comment on, did you want to expand on this comment as far as uh in flooding impacting?
Well, I think, yeah, my my comment there was that I think that um. That statement that it affected a major portion of the downtown. Was was inaccurate. It really didn't affect a major portion of the downtown. It affected. A quite a large section of residential neighborhood and a portion of. Of the downtown south of uh. Sixteenth Street. So I think. I think uh my comment there was that it. It's inaccurate to say the flood. Affected a major portion of the downtown.
So it like it looks like it was kind of updated or there was a red line in here that says when a major portion. Of the residential neighborhood. So rather than saying downtown, changing it to residential neighborhoods were. Uh flooded in June of twenty twenty-two. Is that is more accurate?
Yes.
That's what I was intending, yes.
Okay.
Because technically the downtown, it runs from um eighth to fifteenth to uh fourteenth. And the water was diverted off of Broadway at fifteenth.
Yeah.
So it never actually hit our quote downtown.
And there were so many look-aluses coming and flooding into town. So that brought this.
Okay, looks like we had a couple of comments on that, so I think we've addressed that. I think that that edit there, I think, takes care of that. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I think we can go to the next page, Greg. Okay, so Jeff has a comment. Is this really true? Seemed business went on as usual after majority of the flood effects were mitigated. Uh I would say that two thousand five rain on snow event that caused the washout of Bear Tooth Highway. Uh was much more of an impact.
I think I pick up on on that later in the document. Yes, the big uh the two thousand four oh five landslide, I believe, was a much bigger event. From what I. Learned from the based on my research. But according to the resort tax revenue, there was a Pacific pretty significant hit in the in the during the, I guess, the summer of twenty twenty-two.
Do we want to point out all the bad things that happened? Ten years ago? I mean, I'm not sure that in a business plan for the downtown. There have been things that have impacted the downtown, but do we have to list them all?
Well, the the summary statement, I guess, is that we are dependent on the traffic through Red Lodge. On the way to Yellowstone. And if Yellowstone is impacted and people can't get there, they're not going to come out. Red Lodge is not a destination unto itself.
Yeah, it's on the way.
So I think that's what we're trying to say. Without dragging up every incident from the past, but I mean, that definitely cranked twenty twenty-two, not because of flooding downtown, but because of.
Outside.
You couldn't get through the rest of Yellowstone Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the intent, yep, I think that's the intent is just to show that Red Lodge is highly dependent on. Um. You know, tourism and that these events, you know, drag, even though they may not affect the city itself. Uh dramatically, um some of them, but uh you know, they they do affect the the ability of people to get to Red Lodge. Or or if those destinations are affected, people just don't come. So I think that is important to at least identify a couple of major events.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily because uh Jim is right. He does address the two thousand five event. Later on, uh which is fine. Uh my point here was that it it actually that what affected Red Lodge probably more than anything else is the fact that. People couldn't get through the northeast entrance of the park.
Right.
And so that was probably what drove. And had a ma- major influence in terms of the amount of traffic coming through Red Lodge going to yellow going going to to Yellowstone.
So maybe we should just uh so maybe we should update this more instead of saying some businesses were closed and significantly impacted by the flood. Um maybe we need to say more like because the because Yellowstone Park. And adjacent public lands were affected by the flooding. This resulted in a reduction in tourism numbers for twenty twenty-two. Um which affected businesses, businesses within the city of Red Lodge. Something like that.
That would be a more, that would be more accurate a statement, but I'll let other people weigh in on that.
Well, I would say regional because it was Cook City. It was it was multiple Cody. I mean, there was the it was a regional issue, not just a city issue.
Right. Okay, no, I think we understand. I think we understand where you guys are coming from here, so we can work. We can work with Jim on that that. Re-bapping that language a little bit.
Uh we did.
Maps to being a gateway. Type city.
What's that?
Not not a direct gateway city, but an indirect gateway city. So that, I mean, that's the point we're trying to make. Very dependent.
Dave?
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna going going back to Sandy's comment about we don't want to. Eight eight, the the balance is we have to acknowledge this exists. But I think by by throwing in the regional that John mentioned. That it just says regionally, the area was affected because of this was shut down or access to what was some of the. The language Jeremy has. Part of my earlier question was, and it kind of goes back to the two thousand and maybe this is a question more than it. Did this? Impact us as much as the two thousand four, or have we diversified so there's more to do here now? Versus twenty years ago, it was you're going to the park or you don't come at all. Me- meaning, are we more diversified so it didn't hurt us as hard this time?
Uh yeah.
I think we were closed all summer when with the slides up on the Bear Tooth Pass. You close the Bear Tooth Pass. And that's devastating to the downtown. It's no longer a thoroughfare. You have to be actually coming to Red Lodge.
And 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 I I and I guess my question or thought is, it feels to me. That. We are more diversified now in our approach to tourism. That we're not dead on the vine if the pass isn't open. Does it impact us? Yes, but people came and they just went. Of course, there was a lot of places that were down from this.
Yeah, well, there was also a lot of publicity put on through various groups in town as what with the assistance and. Flexing of the Chamber of Commerce to find other ways to get people here. And although it didn't get us completely to our perfect. Um crowdedness, it did. Make a lot of progress so that people didn't lose anywhere near what they thought they were gonna lose.
And that's not the same as diversification, though. I don't see that Red Lodge has become so different. In the past twenty years that it's you could say it's diversified.
I would say it's diversified, but that's I haven't lived here that long. I only came here in two thousand eleven.
What is so different now from twenty years ago?
From two thousand and four, when we moved here, it's the same way it was. There might be different names on the building. But basically, it offers the exact same things it offered twenty years ago.
Yep.
And there were businesses that went out of business when the um pass was closed all summer. So we it it was a huge blow. So I think that the the roads leading into Red Lodge are really important to stay open.
Uh huh, but we did have people jump in and and create Summer Fest.
Well, those are those are ad hoc. Those are creations.
But it's not money to town.
Well, yeah, but so we had Summer Fest created. That was the only different thing, but and now it's moved three times to different venues.
I didn't need to derail it. It was as I was listening to the conversation, I was wondering if we I hadn't I I I hear. It's not unanimous by any means.
I mean, we are affected by things going on outside, you know, the the flood was direct, correct? But the pass closing and the Willie fire even, those types of things, yeah. I mean, it's the long term that hurt us with the uh pass being closed. It was a long. Time it was closed.
I like John. Blaming it on regional because it sounds like it's a larger.
Problem.
It wasn't Red Lodge's fault.
I think I think you've got that wording.
Good luck.
Information to change, update the wording, Jeremy.
Yeah, I think we we've got it covered. Well. We'll work on that language.
Uh, before we move on, there was a couple of comments from Angie Hazelworth in the chat. Just for the planning board to consider. Uh. She'd said, it's good to consider the disasters and plan for resilience. Um also, backcountry. Was affected, bridges and trails out affected tourism numbers too. So.
It looks like those comments speak to you, not to the everyone, so I'm not seeing that, sorry. Thank you for calling that out.
Yeah, thanks for bringing those up, Greg.
And Angie.
And Angie, yeah.
And Angie for making the comment.
Okay, so let's continue down. Um, yeah, we already talked about photos. We'll 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 work with. Jim and his crew to get photos updated. Um. That's the same thing with Al's comment, so. Uh. All right, Jeff's comment. This sentence completely misses the importance and value of maintaining the walkable and historic character of the downtown. It's not just tourism. The downtown is the center of commercial and local government services for the entire community. That guidance and vision has been part of the Red Lodge growth policy since ninety-five and was restated during the stakeholder sessions this year.
Yeah, that that, you know, that's. It's kind of referencing back to a lot of the comments during the public comment period that. That the downtown doesn't just serve the tourism industry. It also provides supports our uh. The residents of the community and residents, you know, I, you know, make use of those businesses. So I think. I think the purpose of this project isn't just to. Um. Enhance the tourism economy. It's it's to enhance the community and as well as. The tourism economy. That was that's my point in terms of just rereading rewording that introductory statement.
Could it be tourism and business economy?
What's that?
Tourism and business economy?
No, I'm thinking about when I think, you know, business is part about that, but that's fine. And and biz- business and tourism. Economy, but I think the other key point is is the entire community of Red Lodge. It's. It's all the residences here inside the community as well as those living outside that do and conduct business. And come to the downtown to do their business. I think that that point needs to be. Be mentioned.
And residential community, not just.
Well, what if you just said the business community because this is a downtown.
Everybody's, well, you're.
The community uses it, the tourists use it, but it's the business community that we're is the purpose of this project.
The comments from the forum were that we want our downtown businesses also to support. The residential community, not just tourists.
But we're doing it the opposite way. What we're doing is is supporting business community. Of the business economy. In other words, we want our businesses to be successful.
We want our business. And economy. Businesses and the economy to support the community as well, not just the businesses.
Yeah, but this is the downtown master.
Right. But our community has used the downtown and has reliance and. Supports the downtown business community as well.
So what?
It's both.
What if we just take out tourism? What if we just say is to enhance an already robust local economy?
I would love that.
Because then it then it's not, then the focus isn't on a tourism economy. It's just focused on the local economy. Which encompasses the tourism, the local, you know, the small businesses in the downtown, the community itself, right? It 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 that encompasses all of that.
I agree with that.
I'm with that, too.
There, so if we just take out the word tourism, then we just say robust local economy.
Because that's really what we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Teresa?
That that's fine. Yeah, because what we're what we're trying to say is it supports an already robust local economy. In turn, it supports tourists and residents, everybody, right?
Right.
So that sounds good.
And I think that the initial change, because you say downtown business plan, and after you said, no, 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 wait, this isn't. Business, this is downtown plan. And I think that with that, that does that well.
Right.
So I'm okay with you, Marty.
Folks, this is uh this is Jim. I have a question or two. Um, I picked up on that tension between tourism and the community. Um. I wasn't quite sure what to do with how to address that tension. So I throughout this document, you'll see. Pretty much whenever mentioned tourism, I also typically like in the next sentence in this case, mention community. As a way of trying to temper that or or reflect that tension. Part of the problem was I was working from the two thousand six action plan, and that was very tourism focused. And certainly now twenty years later, things have changed. So if this document does tend to have a tourism emphasis. It's mainly because of a carryover from the two thousand six study. Um, action plan. But yeah, we can definitely, I've tried to broaden things a little bit and try to introduce the concept of. How does the downtown also support the community more than just the visitors? And I, yes, I would love to hear more thought, more of your thoughts on that subject. And so then the other question I had is about the planning period, the recent five years or twenty years. I would love to hear more about from the planning board. Do you see this document as being a five-year document or a twenty-year document?
Can we go ten?
Sure, I I the only reason I picked uh it's been twenty years since your last planning effort like this in terms of the two thousand six action plan. And but five is a pretty standard term in the planning world, like your growth policy is supposed to be updated every five years. So you can pick whatever number you want. I just wasn't sure, again, whether we were talking short-term or long-term was my my question there.
I'm okay with a five years, a maximum of ten, but. I I I don't think. Tying this with a growth policy is a bad idea in terms of of review.
Except not the same here.
No, I have my offset years. And the other thing, too, is I've listened to this conversation here. Do we agree that that the the business community and the success of the business community is driven by tourism and visitors? Do we agree with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I I think that the term tourism has to be in here, but I agree with Jim's effort that. We also ought to incorporate and and also the entire community. And so I think. Somehow the way he's done that, I'm okay with is tourism and the entire community.
Okay, so is the general consensus five years then on the planning period?
That's that would be that would be my preference.
Teresa, what's your thoughts?
I I I like the idea of saying five, but max ten years. Things change so quickly. It's not the way it used to be where things just kind of like. Look at politics, look at the pandemics, look at the disasters. Everything changes so quickly. I think five years. Minimum and ten years max is fine.
I think ten, I think ten years is a good number just to not jam up your growth policy review. Cause.
Yeah.
Um, and it and it will take and it will take you a few years to implement the various actions that are going to come out of this plan. So I wouldn't want to. Have you jam yourself up and set yourself up to, you know, with an unrealistic timeframe.
Does it have to be a multiple of five? Can you make it eight?
You can be whatever number you want.
Then if it's not five years, I'd make it eight because I think ten's too young, too too long.
Well, you can always, I mean, it it's it's you're just picking a number, too. You can you can update it whenever you want to. I mean, it just. Just for reference, I mean, you can, you know, if you pick ten years, if you decide as a planning board, well, this isn't really fitting with what. We currently see, you know, and you're in year six or something or seven, you can say we want to update this now, right?
But but I can go, I can go. But, but I can go, I can go the other way too, Jeremy. If I say five and I think we're fine, I could extend it. So.
Yep.
I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd rather have a smaller number in the document than the larger number personally.
Five. I'm okay with, I'm okay with five. As long as it's not twenty, I'm happy. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that I think it would, in the two thousand six plan, there was the year twenty thirty, I believe was called out as a big. I don't know where that came from, but, uh, for some reason they were thinking twenty-four years out into the future back in two thousand six.
There's a lot of things going on.
John?
I like the idea of mimicking what the, uh, growth policy, the year later.
Okay.
Just having an offset year.
So the five years is fine with me too.
Yes. So I guess we've got consensus on five, Jeremy. Uh, going back to the comments on the tourism, you know, I was just looking at this paragraph a little bit. It's, you know, it talks about a secondary, um, object goal is to optimize tourism experience for the ma- maximum benefit of the entire community. I think that's fine as a secondary goal. But I like, but if we drop tourism from that fir- first sentence, I think, I think that, that helps, um, broaden the concept of, of what the downtown.
They are robust local economy. Scratch the word tourism.
Yep.
Out of, out of that sense. And then the, the second, the second sec- second talks about a secondary goal is to explore ways to optimize the tourism experience for the maximum benefit of the entire community. I think that kind of ca- bring, captures the whole intent.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good sentence.
So are you suggesting that scratch tourism in the first sentence, just robust local economy?
Yes.
Yes.
I would agree with that.
I think.
I agree. I think everyone did.
I think we're all in agreement with that. You can move on, Jeremy.
Okay. So the next comments from Jeff, add reference to appendices for the eighty-four master plan and the two thousand six downtown assessment. Is that what you're talking about, Jeff?
Yeah, I was just gonna say if those, if those are going to be part of the appendices, that they just be referenced as a.
Jim, did you, were you going to include those as appendices to this document or are you just referencing them as past documents?
Correct. Just referencing them. And I believe that the, the date is nineteen eighty-six for the revitalization master plan. I've heard different numbers. I've heard nineteen eighty-four, I've heard nineteen eighty-six. According to your, the, the city website and the document that's published there, the number is eighty-six.
And instead of doing it as an appendix, you can always refer to the city website. Or if they want to look up those plans, it's available. I, I don't want to append anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was gonna say.
The eighty-six plan is pretty voluminous. It's, there's a lot of material there. It's a wonderful read, but it, in fact, that's one of the recommendations I make later. It'd be great to distill some of that down because there's some really good stuff that was done back in eighty-six. Um, but yeah, it's a pretty, it's a, it's a big document.
Well, and just like the policy discussion, you know, if you start adding all these past documents and stuff into appendices, then things start getting very, very long.
Yep.
And, you know, we don't, I think you, you just want to reference them.
Yep.
Yeah. So maybe my point there is either have point him, point him with a hyperlink either in, in, in the appendix, have him a point, point to the, to a hyperlink where those documents are or, or put the hyperlink here, I guess, just, just, I'm just kind of throwing that out as a suggestion rather than as having them as attached as appendix, but at least having, having some indication of where to find those documents.
I would rather say, uh, as a, you know, i- i- available, uh, by contacting this, the city of Red Lodge or something. It, it, the link, the link may not be usable in a year, right? If somebody revamps the website and the link gets to, and the thing gets taken down, the link is all, you know, in a year, that link could be, um, you know, useless. So I think maybe just saying, you know, you know, available from the city by request or something like that.
Well, that or, or that or and or see the city website.
Or see the city website, something like that. I, again, I hate to hyperlink anything because those things go, you know, if the city redoes their website in a year or two, you know, that link is going to change. So.
Sure.
I would reference the webs, I would reference the website and let it go with that.
Um, maybe a better website would be the state library because they've got a beautiful way. There's a, the whole document is right there and you just hit the button and it turns the page. Otherwise the city, like if the city doesn't maintain the same link or changes or you might actually have to download it all just in order to be able to read it. And that's not always useful either, but the, the state library has a beautiful setup with the link there.
How does it get into the state library?
I've been looking at it for ages in the state library.
I just go to the city website.
But it's nice because you can just click it and turn the page.
Okay. Well, we only have a, a few more minutes here before we got to move on to the rest of the agenda items. So let's, uh, see, see if we can get a few more pages done here. Um, uh, all right. So we're onto the next page. Um.
On this picture here, I, that you're showing, what I wanted is to have a picture of the forum.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where this picture was taken. I think it was. But I pro- I don't know sure what the source of it was, but, uh, we took plenty of pictures at the forum and that's what the picture I would like to see there.
Yeah.
Jim, did you guys take pictures of that? Or Al, is that something that you guys, that, that any members took or?
I don't remember specifically in terms of the forum. That image is a Great West engineering image of a community meeting, I believe that was held in late twenty twenty-three by one of my predecessors. Either Cody, uh, Markser or Courtney. I believe Courtney was working for the city of Red Lodge at that time. So.
I, I thought I saw some pictures of a forum on the Facebook page, but we can, we can investigate that.
Yep.
I think I took one too. If you get with the date, tell me the day, remind me the day that I can search really quick and find out that we can update the picture.
So there's a, there's a comment up above that that talks about, um, would be great to list out what stakeholder groups were visited, adding greater relevancy to what this plan contains. Uh, so you're just saying add, you know, local stake, looks like a local stakeholder such as, and then lists, uh, those, those stakeholders that were, were talked to that, where this comment is.
Isn't that information at the end of this document though?
Yep.
Further down.
You have the stakeholders and all that listed at the end of this document, I thought.
So I wonder if we could just reference that page or that section that lists those local stakeholders?
That's what I would recommend.
Instead of relisting them?
Right.
Something like that. Okay. We can do that. All right. Sounds good. All right. Let's keep going. I think that's it for that pa- yeah, we can, we can change that. That's an easy one. Um, I think we're on to the next page. Almost all sheet labels on map are upside down. Oh yeah, they are. Uh, the street labels.
Yeah, that was the best image I could find. Uh, that was off the city of Red Lodge website. And I, I felt it was important to keep the orientation in terms of the traffic circle to the right side and, you know, the south side of town to the left, just from, uh, how people are used to kind of looking at the community. But yes, the street names are upside down.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll work on getting a better, I'm sure we can get a better image of that without the street names upside down. So we'll, we'll work on that. We'll, we'll get that updated.
We'll get a local pilot to go take a new picture.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think, I think we could, we can get something off a cadastral or, or Google, Google Maps or something that will, that, that'll, we can, we can, we can figure that out. Uh, we have expert GIS people at Great West and WWC that can probably figure something out. All right. That's, I think that's an easy one to fix. Let's see, do we need to have both? Okay. So do we core business area? Do we need to have both a core business area and a central business district? It seems a little confusing to have both.
Not to mention a, uh, historic central business district. So we just have, we have called out several different ways, the downtown area, core, central, historic. I mean, it goes on and on. It, could we just have some continuity or, you know, at least narrow it down to, you know, what is the core business versus central business versus historical? Cause you're, you're reading, if you don't know Red Lodge and you're reading through this, it's like, okay, which one are you talking about now? What area?
Well, it's going to continue changing. So why don't we kind of mark ourselves into just calling it all Broadway?
Cause I live on Broadway and I'm not in the business district.
But you're very close to business and they.
This is about our downtown business, our downtown plan, right? Downtown master plan.
Yeah.
So what is downtown today?
The definition of downtown.
What is downtown today?
With that. It's the central business district and transition zone.
Downtown. But other people will consider just a few blocks of it downtown.
The central.
As stores and, and retail and so forth spreads, the, um, definition will become more, more generic.
Well, the next five-year plan, we can change it again, but right now what is the core? What is core versus central business district? Because it's called out each different way.
Again, that's a, that's a, those terms are carryovers from two thousand six, the distinction between core and transition. Um, but you're right, it is confusing. I know I anguished over that quite a bit, trying to make it seem, make it less muddy. The term central business district is the official term from your zoning regulations as to how they refer to.
Yeah. And I think that should be, I mean, that's what everybody uses CBD. When you look at demographics and all kinds of data, everybody's got a CBD, right?
Hey, I, I agree with that. And so sort of the, the way I guess I look at the central bit, what's defined as the central business district for Red Lodge is the way it's defined in our zoning. And so there's two subsets to that. One is the historic overlay, which is, I don't, I don't know what the official, if that's officially a historic district or, or not. And then the other is the central business transition. So those are the, so if you look at the whole from the, from the, um, roundabout to nineteenth street, that's the central business district. A subset of that is the community trans, uh, central business, uh, transition zone. And then there's the historic, uh, zone. So maybe if we kind of cleaned up our, the language to, as we talk about the, the whole downtown with the central business district and then we talk about the individual subfeatures of that might help clarify that.
Yeah.
So rather than calling that core business area, we just want to call it central business district. Is that kind of what I'm getting?
Yeah, then eighth to fourteenth.
We don't use the core, so we need to drop core.
I think tying this to your zoning is, is a, I think that's the best way to do it. Cause that, that way somebody could actually go to a map and say, oh, here's the central business district. This is what we're talking.
There we go.
So I, I, I like that idea, Jim. Any thoughts on that?
Um, I, I guess where I get confused again is I do look at downtown Red Lodge as a very important tourism destination. And again, I keep deferring back to the two thousand six study where tourism really was a major focus. And so they made the big distinction between the core area being kind of the prime downtown area, as I understand it. And then the transition areas that were kind of a work in progress. Um, certainly we don't need to do that again. It's now we're twenty, almost twenty years later. You guys can define your downtown any way you want. Um, but from a tourism perspective, and I know just as a visitor to your community, it does, there's definitely a core there from a tourism perspective. And then you feel the transition areas, you know, going to the north and going to the south. So anyway, that's, that's ba- was based on my experience and, um, experiencing it myself this past summer and the, over the last twenty years as visitors. Um, so yeah, again, it's, if, if the focus of the downtown is tourism, then there definitely is a core. If it's not tourism, if it's more of a community downtown, then it, yeah, that's a, that's a different animal. And we should talk about that.
That's all we have. It's our central business district.
Well, we clearly called from eighth to fourteenth, the central business district and our zoning and everything that we've done.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's clearly defined. And then outside of, you know, eighth and outside of fourteenth become transition zones. And so it's pretty straightforward and simple that way.
Okay.
Um, and I don't, I, that's, we don't want to change zoning, but we want them to be the same.
Okay.
So core is the same as central to me.
Okay. No, that sounds good. I guess I didn't realize how much the, the, yes, that, because your zoning has, I think you've updated your zoning over the last twenty years. So you've probably got, that's probably a better term as a way of describing your downtown. I don't think, I don't know if they had that twenty, twenty years ago. Um, or at least as, as, as well defined as you do now. So yes, we should use that.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll work with Jim and, and his group on, on kind of revamping this section here to fit more with the existing zoning.
That sounds great to me.
Okay. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah. Yes.
All right. Well, we're, uh, at seven, ten, twelve here. So Jeff, do you want to, do we want to transition out of this? And, uh,
Yeah.
Put a, put a, put a pin at this and.
Can we finish up this page? There's, there aren't that many.
Jump in here real, jump in here real quick.
Sure.
What I'm, uh, Jeremy, what I'm seeing now is, uh, our next meeting is on the twenty-second. That'll be predominantly growth policy. And we won't visit this again, the downtown master plan until the twelfth. It's the earliest is, that's what I'm thinking right now.
Yeah, I think it kind of just depends on how quickly we get through the growth policy at the next meeting, right? If, if you guys are good with the draft that, that, that is presented and, and we can get through that in, you know, fairly quick order and get it out, you know, get, have an agreement to get it out to the public for public comment and start that process. I mean, I, one thing I would point out, at least on the growth policy topic is that, you know, you guys can still make changes to the document even through the public review process, right? So you're, you know, just because, you know, you say, yep, we think this is ready for public, public review at the next meeting, doesn't mean you guys stopped what you're doing, right? So, you know, if you guys come up with something else that you, that you notice in the plan, you know, by the time we get to the public hearing day, you know, you guys can bring that up at that meeting and we can, we can address that at that meeting too. So my, my thought is hopefully at the twenty-second meeting, you know, hopefully that's fairly quick. Yep, this looks good. We're ready to put this out to the public for comment to get that process started. And then you guys can continue to kind of review that a little bit more behind the scenes and make sure you're comfortable with everything.
I just want to review those dates for your schedule because I've got growth policy on the twenty-second, probably downtown on the twelfth, and then growth policy, public, uh, hearing on the twenty-sixth of February. I just pencil those in for your, for your schedule.
Okay. No, that's, that's, that's kind of what I anticipated. I didn't figure that we were going to get through this downtown master plan tonight. So.
Okay.
Did I hear, did I hear uh, February twelfth for the next meeting?
For this.
Probably, probable twelfth, February twelfth would be the next time we'd get a chance to go at the downtown master plan. Yes, Jim.
Okay, and is there a timeline that we're hoping for in terms of finalizing the growth polit, or the downtown master plan?
I was hoping we could get it done uh, by the end of February, end of March, but it, it'll take as long as it takes.
Okay.
Uh, hi Jim, I would guess we have a, you know, well, cause the second meeting in February will be the public hearing for the growth policy. So that's going to take up probably that whole meeting. So we're not going to get, I doubt we'd get through this and, on the twelfth all the way. Um, so I would say this probably spills into the two meetings in March, probably, at least. So hopefully by the end of March, we might have this uh, with the planning board comments.
Right.
But let's shoot, let's shoot for that. How's that sound?
I just penciled it in so people can pencil it on their calendar, so, okay.
Thank you.
So uh, just want to clarify that we're, the next time we uh, review this document will be starting on page six. Uh, at least on my page, it says, as a map of the central business zoning district.
Right, that's what I got.
Correct, yes.
Everybody agreement on that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Well, you want to start on six instead of finish page five?
We fin, we finished.
Well, I think the other. We finished page five.
Yeah, I think. Are we using Platte and the central business district? I can understand Oaks and Hauser, but Platte.
We can start on the bottom of five.
Well, I think we're going to do away with all that language. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll, we're just going to change this to central business district. And, and I think we referenced the city of Red Lodge zoning map for that, those. That way we're not, that, that way this never goes out of date. So this always is updated if the zoning map ever changes, right? But I think we just referenced the city of Red Lodge zoning map for those boundaries.
Yeah, I like that.
Yep.
Okay, let's.
Can we move on?
Yeah, so we'll start on six next time, so I think we're ready to move on, on the agenda.
All right.
Folks, I'm going to sign out unless you have anything more you need of me.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
See ya maybe next month.
Okay.
All right.
Greg, you want to share that, share the document?
Written, uh, do you have any uh, staff communications and updates?
Um, just that the Brewery Hill.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is online. Um, it still has some tweaking and it specifically states that more is coming, but that is, the Brewery Hill Trail is, the presentation is online.
Okay.
There's still more coming, but it states that there's still more coming, but it is out there.
All right. Any uh, petitions and communications from the audience? There's no audience here, so anybody online?
Yep. Yeah, this is Angela Getchel, um, for L A C F. I just had a question um, about the rezoning of the bowling alley that you guys had discussed. Is that on the agenda or um, when will that be on the agenda?
What, what new zoning are you referring to?
For the, by the bowling alley, the P one, um, right now it's a P one.
It was in the middle.
What I see there Angela is when we go into reviewing the zoning document, uh, that will come up unless it's pushed to a higher priority and it'll be a specific on the agenda, which it's not right now.
Okay, um, and, and would it, um, I, I, I guess I'm just curious, um, a, a timeframe of having that. Uh, how long does it take to have a zone change on that area?
Summer.
I'm not, I'm not sure I can answer that question.
Okay, so I'm just um, kind of feeling out because uh, of affordable housing opportunity on that small um, parcel next to the bowling alley. Um, in, in a partnership with uh, the school district. So that, that's where that's coming from. So I'm just asking, you know, if, if there wouldn't be any opportunity to put that on a higher priority.
So if I can ask a question, who owns that, who, who owns that lot?
The city of Red Lodge owns that.
Okay, so Al, if, if the city can initiate a zone map amendment whenever they want.
Yes.
So if that is, if, if, I guess I would say, if maybe a, a formal request comes in from the school district or, or Angela or from whoever.
Okay.
Set that to the city council. And for that request, that, that request has to come from the city council to make that change. And then it'll come down to the planning board and then the planning board can set that public hearing uh, date, to, you know, to do the ordinance to change that zoning. And we could take it through that process, but it, the planning board would have to have a public hearing. And then it would go to a city council public hearing for a zone map change.
Okay. Okay, okay. Thank you for, for explaining that to me. I appreciate it.
It, it just needs to be a, a formal request from the council or the mayor to put it on the agenda.
Okay, so I, I would need to do that or the school district would need to do that.
Yes.
No, I'm, I'm sure we can, we can do that from the city standpoint. And, and in my thought process, that was, you know, re, revisiting or validating the validity of our zoning to me was like a line item that I would see on here, but what I heard was even outside of this, we, the city council can, the ci, the city council and the city can initiate a request to say, we want you guys to revisit. I think part of it was, and, and this was the discussion that, that we had here and I've had a follow-up conversation with Al since then. From my perspective, it's a more holistic thing than the, 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 the potential housing opportunity is just the, 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 the shot that said, hey, look, our zoning is wrong. Furthermore, it is a possible activity that is held up by the fact that our zoning is wrong. And so I guess to me, and I think, did we already establish a bump planning board? That, that we agree that it's wrong, the bowling alley doesn't belong in a P one, or are we waiting for council to initiate that?
We haven't discussed.
We haven't.
We haven't had that, we haven't had that discussion, Dave.
And, and I guess what I'm hearing is, and I thought it was going to, I, my thinking was it would initiate here. What I'm hearing Jeremy say is we ought to initiate that from council if we think that's something we want to revisit. Or is it something that you guys first?
So technically the city council is the one that has, because the city of Red Lodge owns the land. So since the city of Red Lodge owns the land, that request should come from the city council to the planning board to look at zoning for that piece of property. And um, you know, base, you know, based on the, the potential for affordable housing development or something like that. And then the city, then the planning board can then take that mantle up and say, okay, this is our task, what do we want to zone it? Set a public hearing date, right, and then move forward. If it's a time sense.
I now know who the next action comes from.
I guess I'd, I'd like to just kind of throw out, just based on our last zoning request, that just, just coming before the planning board with a blanket request to change the zoning without any indication of why or what the future plans are for that parcel as part of that, in my opinion, at least from my standpoint, is a non-starter for the planning board. When we, if, if there's a zoning, a request for a zoning change, we ought to have a clear vision of what, of what the outcome of that zoning change is going to be. What's going to be the proposed use? What are even the, some of the proposed designs or intent of that change? Um, I think uh, I think that, I think it just, it needs to, there needs to be clear-cut rationale why, why there is a zoning change being proposed.
And I, and I can um, speak a little bit more to that. And um, as of uh, a year ago, January ninth, I believe it was when um, the workforce housing committee from the foundation came and presented at the council meeting um, about the, the timeline of their projects that they had done. And the, you know, asking for a relationship or a partnership um, with the city in order to further um, you know, help with, you know, attainable housing for our, you know, our workers in, in town that keep our community going. So, you know, we're a year later and I'm just, I'm just hoping that, you know, maybe there's some movement. We did present to the urban renewal district as well. Um, and, and talked about, you know, maybe some opportunity in that area too. Um, I will say that, you know, we came before you and you have, um, you know, you're going to be the recipient, the city is a recipient for a C D B G planning grant with the foundation being a sub-recipient for, you know, attainable housing. So um, I'm just hoping that we can, you know, keep moving forward with, you know, some opportunities that we do have.
All right.
Well.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, I think everybody's covered it, that the planning board will wait and get a request from the city council and with the background and support. And then we will uh, obviously publicize that meeting. It'll be a public meeting. And then we'll review the request and make a recommendation to the council.
That's great. I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's quickly move on to uh, to the uh, priority list. Um, and like, as Al was indicating, I don't think there's a lot of discussion with this. I think it's.
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for participating and I made a few mistakes and I hopefully have corrected those. Um, and what I did is, it's, it's a ranking, a weighted ranking of the various uh, topics. And again, you'll see that there are several topics that fall under the zoning regulations at which the P one zone was ranked pretty high. Um, but you'll see there that the priority ranking is one through eleven. One, two and three are, are pretty well uh, in process right now. And then uh, the review and update of subdivision uh, regulations codes is number four. Um, and on down the list. Um, I want to, at this point, everybody's had a kick at their can here. And there weren't any real surprises. Um, we were fairly consistent on most of them. There was a few discrepancies in terms of some people ranking high and low on, on a couple items such as higher in the city planner and uh, maybe joint communication with the county planning board. Those were some well widespread ones. But what I'd like is if everybody's happy or with this ranking, and this ranking is just a guideline. It's not set in stone. We can move things around. For example, uh, when the one we just discussed, if, if the council says they want us to review the P one zone review, um, that will move up in the priority list, obviously, because the council requests it. Um, what I'd like to do is if everybody on the board agrees with what we have here, I'd like a motion to approve this ranking and so that Sandy then can take it and present it to the council and also to the um, uh, land use, I think, because we would like to get the council's ranking as well, because it's really a joint ranking. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Al, if I present this to the city council, should I also show what the planning board has done, or should I just give them the blank? Here are the topics, if you would please rank them.
No, I would show, I would show them what, this is what, what we did last year, Sandy, is we showed them, this is the planning board ranking based on what we know to date. And if there's some other information that the council has or some priorities that the council wants to change, then they would put that in the final, in that final column over there. And then we would have come up with a final ranking. Um, as we did last year, there was a couple of things that the council put in that we haven't even considered. Uh, if you recall last year, and they moved up higher in the ranking. So this is our, based on what we know to date, and now we need to know what the council's input is.
Okay.
Oh, I did catch a formula error. Um, so this is updated now and it reordered a couple of these, but just very minor, like this one.
Yeah.
Seven.
Yeah, yeah, this, 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 this one right here. Uh, certified planner dropped a little bit, so need to change that ranking a little bit. And I can, I'll do that uh, and send it and, and, and resend the copy after tonight.
Okay. And I, I would also like, I would also like to note that um, uh, when we sent our ranking back to Al, uh, we actually had the higher certified planner as blank. Cause we don't really have, we, we had that column or the, for the higher certified planner. We had that as blank on our end, just.
I know, and I put it, I put it as eleven because, because you, you didn't fill it in, yeah, you had it.
Right, no, I, I just want to make a note to the planning board and everybody that we had blank, because we don't have an opinion. We did not rate that eleven because, I mean, it's just, we didn't want to understand that it needed to be in there to make sure that the formulas worked, so.
Noted.
They didn't want to vote that we get rid of them and.
When you left a blank, I took, I took, I, I, if I left, if I left a blank, it screwed up the whole thing, and so I put up the eleven.
No, I, I, I understand why you did it. I just, we just wanted to make sure it was, it was known. We did not put eleven in there for that one.
I know that.
It is a little self-serving.
But other than the one, other than the one that Greg just pointed out on, on the certified planner moving down to uh, exchanging with uh, subdivision review. Um, if there are not any changes, I'd like a motion to approve so Sandy can take this to the council.
I move to approve.
A second.
And, and prove it's amended, because I'll amend it, Sandy and send a new, new one out.
Okay, so I move to approve this as amended to take the city council.
And, and I would suggest adding and requesting the, the council's ranking, rank, ranking. Make that part of the motion. Ranking.
Well, I got a column there for priority ranking.
I see that.
Is there a second?
A second.
Teresa seconded.
All right, um, can I have a roll call or is there any more discussion? Have a roll, roll call, Greg? Oh, wait, Teresa?
One thing, I'm just wondering, um, I, I, I know that we've been not warned, but uh, prompted for some time now to really uh, take a look at the subdivision code regulations as a higher priority. And I don't know that city council would understand that or where it's coming from, but I think it needs to be stated when it's presented. It's a ticking time bomb.
I know the subdivision issue was one that Jeremy brought up that we think we need to look at. And as a practical matter, one, two and three are already in process. I mean, so actually the subdivision would be right up there like four or five, which is next.
Maybe we could request not messing with one, two, three, four. Holding on to those.
Well, and now that we're in a new legislative session, you know, there's going to be more changes in the next three months anyways. So it makes sense to wait until, you know, April, May to probably do anything with the sub regs anyways. So um, I think it's good timing um, that, that we hit, you know, after the growth policy and the downtown master plan is done. You know, we hit the zoning and the subdivision regulation stuff, uh, you know, last half of the year. So um, I think, I think we're okay.
Dave?
I'm just curious, do we have subdivisions coming in? Is that a, are, are we going to be good for the upcoming building season, or do we have anything we need to fix that's not going to cause problems prior to that?
Uh, I mean, your subdivision regulations are way out of date. Um, there's been a lot of changes since two thousand eleven. The, the only thing I would say is that regardless of whether your subdivision regulations are updated, there are certain things in law that we have to do regardless of whether the subdivision regulations are, are updated. So I, I, I would say you're fine. Um, you know, I, the, the thing I can point to is like phase developments. Like you don't have the phase development stuff in your regulations, but we still have to do it regardless of whether it's in the regulations or not, if that makes sense.
The only suggestion I had in the add amended, Al, I noticed that you had just put in a number for them. The only suggestion I had in the add amended, Al, I noticed that you had just put in a number for them. My thought was if you made that field an equation that was an average of all the preceding fields, then it could be used without.
Right, I, I put a number in there because Sandy ranked them and so I didn't, I didn't want to ignore her, her, her ranking. Everybody else put them in there as whatever the zoning regs are.
I'm sorry, I backtracked. I'm talking about the eleven we filled in for,
W W C.
For W W C. We could replace the formula that was an average of all the, everything else on that row and that way it wouldn't skew one way or the other.
It won't change the ranking. Can we call the question?
Yes. Roll call? I mean, uh,
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Gray?
Yeah.
Conley?
Yes.
Echols Bell?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Dee Benedetto?
Yes.
Bloomer?
Yes. And Sandy, I'll get you a, a revised copy here within the next twenty-four hours and a copy of the board as well.
Thank you, Al.
And, and because of timing, if you'd please include that because I'll have to have it ready to send out just for discussion first thing Friday morning.
You'll get it, you'll get it way before that. And, and Jeff, can I take a moment here just, just to make sure our next meeting is on the twenty-second? Uh, is there anything, Greg, other than growth policy due on the twenty-second?
No, nothing on the agenda.
Okay, and then, um, just a minute here. Um, and then on the twelfth, we're going to go back to downtown master plan. We don't anticipate anything else at that point?
February twelfth.
Correct.
On February twelfth?
Correct. I don't think the, if that zone change came in from council, I don't think, right, Jeremy, that won't be ready by then.
And then the twenty-sixth, we're thinking that we're going to have the public hearing on the growth policy. Now, if the council, uh, gives us something, a, a request between now and those meetings, we'll, we'll deal with it when we, when we get that request. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, just, uh, just one question on the zoning change since this dominant zone within that area was community entrance. It would, I would assume the request would be to change from P one to,
Community entrance.
C three. Yeah, C three.
I, I think that was part of the quote-unquote input we were, were looking for, but, but yeah, you're, it's, and, and a lot of it is, what is it that's in there already? How do we, how do we make it accurately reflect what's there?
Well, the other point I wanted to make is you don't, we wouldn't want to stick a, one single parcel R four.
Exactly. No, absolutely, no. It's, it's the idea of what should that be?
Okay.
We need to look at it long-term.
Not a spot zone.
Okay.
We, we need to look at it long-term, not in the short term.
Correct.
Yeah, well, that was my point on having a well-thought-out proposal, not just we want to change it for P one.
And we've never discussed it. It was just a comment that you made at the end of the last meeting.
It's okay.
All right, are we ready?
We are.
Discerned.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, good time, Al.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff.